Yeah.
You'll call the regular city council meeting of April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M. to order. Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call please, sir.
Mayor Allison.
Here.
Tom Baylor is absent. Kathy Sherman.
Here.
Casey Kinsman.
Here.
Melina Meyer.
Here.
Ann Schaefer.
Here.
Kristen Carpenter.
Here.
Ken Jones.
Here.
That's a quorum of council.
Any objection to the turbo of the regular agenda? If you're not in the agenda, will be approved. Any disclosures of conflicts of interest or ex parte communications?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I don't think it's a conflict, but I just, for transparency, I work for the first one's on Science Center, which is looking to lease a building, their own packet.
Okay, I would say that you do not have a conflict because I don't think it affects your position whether they get the bill or not.
Nothing might pay a change if not.
Any others? Okay, communications by petition for visitors, I think, is Representative Louise Stutes online.
I'm Sarah Vance.
Okay, floor is yours.
Thank you, I'm going to ask, I wish, I'm a very honest person, I'm always looking for every reach my can find in Southern Cordova, and I just, unfortunately, as you all know, there is a budget crisis right now, so I feel like I doubt it to be here. As you know, or may not know, the House passed this budget over to the Senate, and we were just a little bit, but I have some dollars in the hole, that we had a pretty quick deal going on our school funding, which was D. L. funding, and at the last minute, the majority chose to change that to C. B. R. funding, and which is our constitutional budget reserve funding, which takes us three-quarter of both, and I was interested that's probably not going to happen, but all is not lost. The House minority has been working with the Senate majority, and let me back up to this, sending your team to California and ask for me to please, like you all know, we really wanted to be here, but he had a prior engagement that he just couldn't change, even though he tried, so I'm going to sit here for both of us. But we, so we passed them, I guess, over to the Senate, we're working very closely with the Senate, the hope is that we're going to keep that C. S. A., we have a, right now we have a one-time funding scheme, and it would be of six hundred and eighty dollars. Now, whether that's going to remain one-time funding, or the alternative is, it could be partially, a portion of six hundred and eighty dollars could be one-time funding, and a portion of the six hundred and eighty dollars could actually go into a potential C. S. A. increase. We're still working on that, and we are anticipating that the Senate will switch back our funding, our school funding, from C. B. R. to general fund, funding, which is the good thing. We had a, let me just say this, from where I sit with my process, obviously, once again, the T. S. D. is a huge issue, it's an open-ended huge issue. This year, we can increase our school funding, we can pay all of our bills, we can have a capital budget, we can have a T. S. D. of somewhere around thirteen to fourteen-hundred dollars, and now it's our budget with no drop from our C. B. R., which almost has got two point two or two-point-three billion dollars, and then, and it is being vice of less finance, we should have a least three-point-five for merchants' fees, or any, you know, fires, or whatever happens. So that's what our hope is, comes back from the Senate. Yesterday, we had a meeting with the governor, and it's interesting, because the governor is going to put forward a proposal for a, a sale, a sale. Well, Gary and I have both said, we can't support a sales tax, we know that the communities that we represent already have a local sales tax, and so it's just too hard. The taxes that we are looking at, like are, there is a loophole currently where our oil companies, they pay some tax to the state, however, Hillcor, which is one of the major oil companies in the state, is a sub-ads corporation, sub-ads corporation, and they don't require any kind of income tax. So we are looking at closing that loophole, which would then cause Hillcor to pay the tax, and interestingly enough, Hillcor expected, this is not a surprise, they feel pretty lucky that they've gotten away with it as long as they can, and actually, one of our senators said, hey, I think we have a book after target, and the day they bought out Conso, but that's going to happen. So that's one task thing we've got. Another task that's been looked at is, it's called the internet sales tax. It does not affect you and I as users. What it does is it says, let's take Netflix, it does Netflix, you are paying this many dollars to the state of Alaska, you need to pay a tax on those dollars you're making, and it does not affect us, but it redistributes the money that they are paying out in taxes. So Alaska would then give their show. So it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with, like, Amazon, who certainly have got, certain communities charge sales tax, I think, from Amazon, two entirely separate things, excuse me. So those two things have a possibility of passing this year. Uh-oh. No, excuse me, sorry. Those, I think those are the main focus, again, I said, we're working very closely with the Senate, even as minority, I'm very, very thankful, and I, and I've said this to you guys many a time, that Gary and I have the relationship we have, because not only does it help the community we represent, but it helps the whole state. So I think, I think I've covered most of it, and I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Can you speak to the capital budget as well?
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear it very well.
Can you speak to the capital budget? Where does that, where's that looking?
But I would venture to say that on this budget cycle, our capital budget is going to comprise mostly of money that we will need to match the federal dollars that are coming into the state. There's not going to be a huge capital budget, but I think that the capital budget will be more lucrative next year, and this year, we're trying to focus on the resolving the T. S. D. issue, which the T. S. D. is fighting over the T. S. D., and how the monies are going to be allotted, which brings me to one more thing, is there has in that been a D. S. B. bill, it's come over to the House, over to the Senate, and it's a bill that says the new formula for the T. S. D. will be a twenty-five seventy-five of the P. O. S. percent of market value, unless, unless we have new revenue, and this is the bill coming from the Senate, new revenue, fully coiled revenue, that is in the amount of one-point-three billion dollars, because that's what we need to stay sustainable, then, if we have new revenue, that is one-point-three billion dollars or more, then the T. S. D. goes to fifty-sixty of the P. O. S. So this year, the last number I saw, which was today, coming out of the Senate, and these are not final numbers, but I think it was like a one-point-four, one-point-four of the, one-point-four billion on the, yeah, on the.
Robert Sherman.
Billion. I'm trying to think here, on the capital.
Oh. Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Sherman, or, I mean, Schaefer.
How does school bond debt reimbursement look?
Hundred.
State bond debt reimbursement.
You all, yes, yes, and right now, in the budget, school bond debt reimbursement is at a hundred percent.
Any other questions, Representative Stutes?
Representative Stutes, I don't know.
I want to know if the other side should all come in.
Oh, beautiful, yeah, should game.
I wish, you're not upset, I wish I could have, I really do wish I could have, and don't be saying me this, come on.
And if I may just add, and you probably can fill in, tomorrow, there's a Senate Finance Committee call-in for a public testimony in the morning, how critical would it be for our community to chime in?
I think it's, I think it's credible, you know, I, you guys in Cordova are absolutely incredible, I honestly, truly, I attribute the, the success of maintaining our last Marine Highway system, majority, the majority of the reason is because of Cordova, and your guys' input, you have a bigger voice than you realize, so if you see something, not tomorrow, but at any time, when you see something, you're free to, call and get ahold of me, get ahold of Gary, so we can say, hey, these are, these are people calling in. It makes a difference, trust me, it makes a difference.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
And as a matter of fact, as a fiscal community, I'm going to be calling you guys, because once again, I'm going to go after that conflict of interest bill on, for the border fisheries and the border case, and we'll see if we can maybe be given a better trial than we did last time, so I'll be calling you there, get your itchy bones, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Kinsman? Now, just real quick, between Hillcor and closing that loophole, and Internet sales tax, do you guys have rough numbers on what kind of revenue that might bring in for the state?
Um, let's see, I, I don't have something in front of me, I think that the loophole was about, if I'm not mistaken, and I will, I will get the numbers and send them to your mayor tomorrow, but I think the loophole was about six hundred million, and I think the internet sales, I don't know what we're giving a sales tax, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Substantially, do we, anybody else, questions for Representative Stutes? Well, thank you for calling in, Representative Stutes, we appreciate all the work that you and Senator Stevens do for us down there, and you know, we're well-represented, and we appreciate your, your support down there.
Well, I'm going to tell you, speaking for myself, and I'm sure our president, we feel honored to be able to represent a community like Cordova, you guys are the best, and super, and speaking for myself, I love you guys, you're just the best, thank you.
Thank you, good luck down there, Juneau.
Okay, bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, that moves us on to audience comments regarding the agenda items. Come on up and state your name and address and.
Hello there, Katrina Hoffman, three oh one South Second Street. First of all, not all of us spend every other Wednesday night here, so thank you for your service. Three, three things, one, the old Seagrant building is up for lease, a new lease with the Science Center, we've been leasing that from the city for a long time, I've got five staff out on two different boats right now, that are doing a variety of different things as it pertains to the work we do around the Sound, and it's really helpful for us to have that building to prepare for and deploy and return to harbor with all of our materials and equipment and supplies, so I know it's a shorter lease than previous, and that we understand is because of potential future development in harbor, so I'm here to answer questions if you have any, and thank you for considering that lease. Also, in the packet, you have a report from the Chamber of Commerce, I sit on that chamber board as a representative of the Science Center, and there's twenty-three bullets there about all the awesome work the Chamber is doing that brings money to town and keeps money circulating in town, and I know that the city is important to sustaining the Chamber, and I think it, it magnifies greatly the investments that we make in it, so thank you for prioritizing the Chamber in your budgets. And lastly, you have some item, an item in your packet around the U. S. Postal Service package pickup, we receive at the Science Center a lot of specialized equipment and supplies, some of them are bulk and heavy, it really helps us to be able to transfer those things to our vehicles in a safer manner, that protects our people from injuries, and protects postal service employees from injuries using that backdoor service, and so, to any degree, the council can advocate for that type of service, we appreciate it, thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else, comments on agenda items?
Hello, Wendy Rainey, twenty-five hundred Work Road, I'm here just to speak also in favor of trying to advocate to work with the Postal Service, I understand that one of the leaders was here today, and I'm kind of disappointed that they didn't stay and answer some questions for the community, I think at this point, we've heard from the community, but we haven't heard from the post office, and the backdoor situation, you know, I understand that there are rules, but I think that we could come to some sort of compromise, but the biggest issue, I think, for most of us is, nothing's been addressed by the post office, so I think if we could even advocate to have somebody just do a public meeting and talk to us about what's going on and why things are going on the way they are, and then maybe work with us to figure out a way that works for everybody, the summer season for me, it's going to be extremely difficult to have to load my, my business packaging out of the front window, the winter time's not so bad for me, but the summer is thousands of pounds of equipment that comes through that back door, and it's going to be extremely difficult for me and my little blue Jeep to try to load everything from the front door, but I think the bigger picture is, you know, just getting some communication from the post office with the community, there's got to be a way that works for everybody, but we need to have people talking, and right now, it's a one-way conversation, so thank you for your time.
Okay, we've had two comments now on the post office, so let me just address that real quick, I think, I believe Candace, the district manager, was here yesterday, today, I'm not sure, but they were going to, Melissa, I can't recall her, her last name.
Mederos.
Huh?
Mederos.
Mederos, I think she's the community liaison outreach person for the U. S. Postal Service for our, for our region, her and Candace are both planning to come to Cordova, they were going to come yesterday, but to meet with community leaders and members of the community, trust me, Cordova has their attention, and they are well aware of, of the concerns, and want to come and hear from us directly, it was so much going on this week that they couldn't spend enough time here to, to make it worth anybody's while, so I think Candace came to observe at the actual work location, and Melissa and Candace are planning a return trip to Cordova, they're going to meet with community members, with myself, a couple of council members, the city manager, some other key people, Kathy Sherman, I believe, is on, on the list for the Chamber, and I think the writer of this letter is, is also on that invite list, to meet, and I'm sure they will meet with other community members and, and employees as well at that time, but they want to come down for a couple days to, to meet with us, next week wasn't good, because one of them is on annual leave, so we're looking at the first week of May, that they are going to come down for, for a couple days, I suggest that if they really want to hear from the community, that they have more of a town hall meeting than a little meeting, but they wanted to meet with a select list of individuals first, and see, see where that went, and I believe that we will get some, some action on something down there, whether or not we'll get everything that we're asking for, I was told by the district manager herself, when I talked to her on the phone, that the backdoor isn't completely out the door, according to her, it's only if your packages don't fit on a cart, but I can put a thousand-pound package on one of them carts, and I still can't get it in my truck, you know, or over the sidewalk, so.
Nor can we move it, sorry.
Anyway, we have their attention, the community has their attention, they're sending key people to Cordova to discuss this, they're, they are as concerned as we are, at least on the face, and have said that they're willing to, to consider options, but they certainly want to hear our concerns straight from our faces and not from our Facebooks, so I believe that they've seen all of those, or at least they're well aware of the situation, so anyway, that's the, my take from the post office, I was going to save that for when it came up on the agenda, but I see several people here that I'm sure are concerned about that same thing, we had first two comments regarding that, so we will, we will keep you apprised of when that time comes for, for those discussions, and, and we will certainly advocate for, for making it user-friendly for, for our community, so, anyway, that said, still open for audience comments regarding agenda items.
April Beadle, six oh nine Spur Street, and I just, not sure if you're telling us that you don't want to hear anything about the post office?
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, you know.
What about later in the meeting, this meeting, or?
No, your, your time for comment is now.
No, okay.
And if you want to make comments, that's, I just wanted people to be aware of that we do have their attention, and they are going to come and listen to the community, they're not, not listening to us, they hear us and, and they will be, be back.
Okay, thank you for sharing that, and I, from my position, I'm very limited to what I can say, but I would like to encourage people to reach out to Anisha Estes, she's available to write letters to, and I believe that we've got maybe a few wheels starting to turn, but this has not been resolved, and I don't think it's going to be resolved that easy, so if you just please reach out to Anisha, and our summer season is around the corner, our canneries can get twenty to forty packages a day going out that front door, it's going to be a nightmare, it's already a nightmare, so that's probably all I can say, but please, I think, thank you to anybody that has reached out and stood up for us, but if you can please pass your correspondence to Anisha, thank you.
Steven Amis, U. S. Postal Service, Second Street, Federal Building. Just had a couple of comments, one is, I would reiterate what Mrs. Hoffman and Mrs. Rainey said about the post office, this is our field season, and we get a tremendous amount of bulk in, and changing the way we do business, I think, is putting postal employees at risk, as well as some of our own employees, handling that much bulk, traveling through the parking lot, diversing, I had employees send me some photos today, and it wasn't good, so either we need to come up with some mitigations on how we do business, or we're going to have to figure out how to change our way, and we may be sending two or three people to the post office to, to manhandle the amount of bulk that we get in, so that said, I'll keep it short, but just kind of reiterating what Lieutenant said. Second is, I'm just here to answer any questions that would be available, there's a letter of concern in relation to the, to the harbor and the postal service dock, so I'm here for that as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Randy LaSangre, and I work for Trident Seafoods, and I'm here just to, I heard about what's happening, I just came to town, and I want to read what I wrote, and during the fishing season, we employ six hundred and fifty to seven hundred employees between the north and the south land, we also provide logistic support to our fishermen during that time, we have about twenty tender vessels, and on top of that, fishermen, that we provide logistic supports to, on the average, we receive about four to five pallets of packages between the north and the south, we've been pretty successful at fulfilling our obligations to our employees and fishermen in coordination with the post office. What worked, we have an expediter who picks up mail and packages twice a day, she picks them up from the back parking lot, where the packages are grouped and can easily be loaded into the van by just traveling a short distance, this enables us to keep up with the mails, with all the mails for the day, and process them on a timely manner to be delivered to our employees and fishermen. What will be the challenges and possible consequences of the new procedure? Employee injury, there will be likelihood of employee injury from both parties, repetitive motion from squatting, lifting, overreaching, et cetera, to get each packages across the counter can cause injuries, it's a repetitive motion, I forget to mention, I'm the safety manager for Trident Seafoods, not to mention the increased distance our employees has to travel to get each packages to the van through the lobby doors and across the parking lot, it's not, it's quite a distance, and we value our employees' safety, and if it means not getting all the packages for the day to keep them safe, that is what we will do, unfortunately, though, we might create a backlog on the post office's part, and I understand that during the summer months, you probably need all the space that you can get, right? The second one is the delayed delivery, we do not have enough manpower to assign additional personnel to get all those packages for more than the time that we allot at each day, so we do mail run twice a day, in the morning and in the afternoon, we allot about an We allot about an hour, because we, an hour each time, or 30 minutes, because we have to attend to groceries for the fishermen and airport runs and clinic visits and all that stuff. So, we have allotted that much time, which was enough in the previous years. And so, we don't have the manpower to assign another person to do that. So, it will cause delay on package delivery to our employees and fishermen. And it will likely result in foot traffic increase at the post office. We've had post office personnel call us in the past because our employees go to their lobby and ask for their packages. Unfortunately, they cannot give them their packages because it's addressed to Trident Sea Foods. So, it just creates that traffic for them. And of course, they have to attend to every person that comes to the post office. So, I can imagine the line that it will create. The post office, whoever called before, told us that if we can do something about it. So, what we've been doing is every orientation, when our employees come, we ask them to be patient with the post office. Because they can tell when the packages arrived here, because they have a tracking system. And we tell them that the post office is small. They don't have enough manpower to unload vans of packages every day. So, they have to be patient until we tell them that the package is here. Unfortunately, if we can't get to all of them in a day, we can't deliver their mail. Therefore, it might create them being impatient and go to the post office and create that long line. So, that's what we're trying to avoid. And so, that's what we have. And I hope that the post office will continue to work with us on this matter. They are coming, our employees are coming. South Plant, I think, will start in May, and North Plant will start in June. They'll start coming, and as soon as they get their first paycheck, you can expect packages to come through. But thank you for listening. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I'll be sure that both Melissa and Candace hear these comments.
Hey, this is Tyler with Candace's Last Call Sea Foods. And same thing, I'll keep it short this week, so I know we've all heard it. But we have the same concerns as everyone else. You know, we have a lot of mail all summer long. And I understand how hard it is on the workers down at the post office, having to deal with every business in this whole community, only getting picked up from the front doors. It's going to be a lot of work all summer. So, we'd like to put in our root for trying to get the back door back. Thanks.
Toni Goaz, 105 Love Street, or Love Trail, excuse me. So, I gave, when you and the people who meet with the postal service, I just want to request that, I think this problem goes way deeper than the back door. And I can just feel the tension when you go in the post office. It's like, this is not fair enough. These ladies are working their asses off. They're always at a smile. It's bullshit. And she's just not a good fit for this town. She doesn't, she's not adapting. I mean, it's one thing coming in from somewhere else, there's an adapting, you know, people can. But she isn't, and it's hurting our whole community. So, it's much deeper than the back door. And that's all that I'm saying.
Thank you.
Good evening. Anisha Estes, 1329 Crest Circle. I wanted to say that I did speak with Candace at length today about the post office. And I have to reiterate what Toni just said. It's a far deeper problem than the bay doors at this point. If it would have been just the bay doors, there would have been an apology, some empathy, some compassion with what's going on with the community. I apologize, we'll work with you, we'll open the doors. That hasn't happened. So, that's only proved the point that we're dealing with a difficult postmaster. And at first, I was angry that there was no response. But now, I'm a bit thankful because if those back doors would have been opened, then our local ladies would have been shut back there, still dealing with what was going on quietly. I actually ended up calling Candace again after I got home because I neglected to ask her, who shut the bay doors? And she told me that she could not tell me whose fault it was. So, I responded with, interesting, can you please tell me what the policy or regulation is that those bay doors have shut? There is no policy or regulation specifically that they're following. She did mention that mail was supposed to be passed over the counter. And I asked about heavy packages, multiple packages, oversized packages, people with disabilities that can't get those packages. Because our local ladies for the last decades, 30 years, have been using their discretion perfectly at opening those doors when needed, not abusing the doors. And Candace did say discretion should be used, the door should not be taken away. So, there's the miscommunication going on. And it's highly concerning because it's affecting our lifeline, which is the post office. And the situation is just sucking the lifeblood out of our lifeline. It sounds petty, but you know, we've gotten really used to using these doors, especially since COVID. Everybody gets auto shipped, dog food, cat food, soda, paper towels, on and on and on. None of it's going out the back door now. I know there's a sign on the fence that says authorized vehicles only. Nobody's parking back there. Consider it dropping off a person at the post office, I mean, at the airport. TSA lets you drop people off, load and unload, and you're on your way. If we can do it at the airport, I think we can go back to doing it here. It's the easiest, most cost-effective fix that we have, is just to go back to the way it was. So, I thank you for taking the time to listening. And if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other audience comments on agenda items? We'll move along to chairperson representatives of boards and commissions. Anybody from CCMC, board to board here or online? School board? Any other of our boards and commissions? Okay, there's a student council report in your packet. It was nice to see, hear what they're up to, and that they're looking for projects, so. They have one this weekend.
Yes.
Yes.
They're taking on cleanup.
Cleanup, yeah, Saturday.
On Saturday, yep. Okay, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar is before you.
Yeah, I'll call the roll on the consent calendar. Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Tom Baylor is absent. Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
The consent calendar is approved.
Okay, thank you. The minutes were in the consent calendar. We have no bids or proposals, contracts at this time. So, move on to report of officers. My report is in your packet. I don't, other than the upcoming meeting with the postal people, I don't think there's anything much new to add to that, other than what everybody knows what's going on. So, the short word coming up for our next meeting, probably. And, any questions? Okay, manager's report.
Helen? Thank you. I'm just sending you all information on how to do public testimony tomorrow morning for the Senate Finance hearing on budget. I believe the local LIO office, if anybody locally wants to testify, you can go to the LIO office tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. And there's also call information, which I'm happy to share. Or the LIO office can give you that information. So, I just wanted to do a loop around, because again, it's budget season down in Juneau, and it's vitally important that we show our support for those things that are important to our community and ourselves. So, that's that. I don't have a written report, but I did want to talk about something that I just heard about. And it's related to housing. Housing in Cordova is extremely tight right now. And I've heard two recent things that are concerning, and I wanted to just have a quick conversation about. One is, I've heard that there are scams afoot. We have a new hire who will be moving to Cordova from Haynes, and she almost got caught if it was not for the alertness of Kathy Sherman. But someone has posted for rent information on Facebook with a legitimate Cordova address. And that legitimate Cordova address was for someone that actually was not renting anything. And someone was trying to get first and last month's rent from a local Cordova address. So, that scam is active. I've heard about it in other communities, and I wanted to just put out a little alert on that. The second thing around housing, which I think is also concerning, is, again, how someone moving to town, and I see all over Facebook that people are looking for housing rather desperately. We have a lot of folks who come here seasonally. And what seems to be an issue right now is that some of the housing is being pulled off the market because we do have some big construction projects coming up. And those construction projects are able to offer higher rent than maybe just someone who has a normal job. So, those houses, those normally available housing units are now only going to be available for construction crews that are coming in. And what's concerning is that it's sort of a self-defeating thing there, where we have a need for housing for people who are going to live here year-round or seasonally. And we are having reductions in housing for a number of reasons. And the housing crunch is going to keep our community from growing. It's going to prevent people from moving here. So, I throw that out just because we, as we talk in about a month around housing, there's other mitigating factors, there's other complicating factors that are, you know, creating, that are causing us to have a housing issue that is just getting exponentially worse. And we'll all have to, as a community, come together to figure out some resolution, so, yeah. And that's it for my report.
Questions for the manager? See none? City clerk's report?
I don't have anything specific to review. I can answer any questions if anybody has any.
Questions for the clerk? See none? We'll move on to the staff board of reports. Comments, questions?
Appreciate them as always.
Any comments, questions on the board of reports? Okay, moving on then to correspondence. We have several letters in there. Any questions or comments on those? We did have a couple of people in the audience that were representative of those letters. If you have any questions for them? Electronic recycling happening next week. And the post office folks are coming, and it's just not for the back door. They want to hear any concerns that we have as a community. So, we will be sure to pass on all those concerns. Any else? Last chance, last call. On the correspondence? Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Resolution 042312, the resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, supporting the 2023 Port Infrastructure Development Program, PIDP grant application for the Cordova North Harbor Efficiency and Resiliency Project. It's 41.
I move to approve resolution 04-23-12, supporting North Harbor Port Infrastructure Development Program, 2023 grant concept for grant application.
Second.
We got the second there? It was kind of the chorus.
Kathy. I think Kathy.
Yeah.
Okay, councilmember Schaefer?
I really appreciated all the background, and that was included in the packet, about the grant development and decision-making that went into what was included and what was not included. I guess. My major question, I guess, was whether, and it was answered, but just was whether it had gone out to all fuel companies, you know, to have, choosing one private partner to help with the match of the grant, or if it had gone out to everyone, it did. So, that was clarified, and I appreciate that.
Councilmember Sherman?
No, I don't have anything additional to add. I should have been following along as this has been developed, so. And read through the higher commission minutes to see their comments, so it seemed to all be addressed.
Okay, does staff have any extra things to add?
Um, no specific questions, no.
Okay, then councilmember Kinsman?
I'll just thank you for comprehensive information. That was well done. Thank you.
Councilmember Meyer?
No, I don't have any additional questions. Thank you.
Councilor Jones?
Yeah, um, yeah, we've been supporting this project, but I'm a little disappointed to see that the money has stripped down. That was a priority of the whole state. That's two hundred reasons to continue this project. Yeah, I'll support it, and we can do that back in the day. And it's a huge project.
Thank you. Councilor Carpenter?
I have no comments.
Okay, any other last ads?
If successful, what would the theoretical timeframe for this project be?
So, they'll be doing grant awards sometime in the fall, so probably September, October timeframe. If we were awarded, it would take 12 to 18 months to, probably those are 18 months, to get into a grant agreement. So, that's putting us towards the end of '24, beginning of '25, with construction probably starting, you know, end of '25. In that timeframe, so it'd be 2026 construction, I'm most likely.
Okay, last chance? Okay, who do we need to?
Either one. You want me to do a roll?
Yeah.
On resolution 42312. Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Tom Baylor is absent. Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Ann Schaefer?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you. I have 16 on our agenda, resolution 042313, a resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a three-year lease of Prince William Sound Science Center for the old Seegrant building, located within a portion of Lot 3, Lot 7, 8, Tigewater Development Park.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution 4-23-13.
Second.
Motion in the second. Councilor Carpenter?
I think the information in the packet is pretty explanatory. We heard from the science center about how they use the building, and it's a short-term lease, allowing for a modification of use of that site in the future if this grant money does come through. So, I support the resolution.
Councilwoman Schaefer?
I echo those comments.
Councilmember Meyer?
Okay, I echo the comment.
Councilmember Kinsman?
Yeah, no further comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Sherman?
No, I'm in favor of this list.
Councilmember Jones?
I have no comments before the question.
Okay, ready for a vote? Can we, before we go into?
Sure. On resolution 42313, Ken Jones?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Tom Baylor is absent. Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Ann Shaffer?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, thank you. Item 17, resolution 04-23-14, a resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Sea Western, Inc. for the purpose of acquiring 25 self-contained breathing apparatuses and masks for the Cordova Volunteer Fire Department.
I move to direct the city manager to negotiate a contract with Sea Western, Inc. to purchase 25 Scott Air Path X-Bro SUVAs and masks, for some not to exceed $181,200 non-voicemail.
I'll send it back.
Okay. Shaffer?
Um, I mean, this was something that we talked about in our capital discussion with, Paul, and passed it in our capital budget, and I support it.
Councilmember Kinsman?
If I'm correct in reading the terms of this, we're kind of entering the same terms we did as we did with the police vehicles, or?
Yes, so we can use community leasing partners as a option to spread out the cost of the equipment over a span of five years. It will be part of the annual budget process, and given that the fire department needs to replace these regularly, we probably will start to see that as an annual expense just embedded in the annual budget.
How can we get to a point, hopefully in the future, where we, that's why if we do 35 moving forward, and we're paying a lessy company to do this for us, but can we take some of that money moving forwards, we're not kind of beholden to the terms of the lessor, and we can control our own destiny, so to speak, if that makes sense?
Yes.
I think it's a great option for the time being, so thank you for being creative in putting this together.
Councilmember Jones?
I don't know.
Councilmember Sherman?
No, as Councilman Shaffer said, we discussed this at budget time, and understand the long-term ramifications of community leasing programs, a good way to go. I support it.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Echo previous comments.
Councilmember Meyer?
Hey, um, I echo the comment, really happy that we had the industry kind of pettified.
Okay, thank you. People are ready to vote? Down to a roll, please.
On resolution 42314, Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Ann Shaffer?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Tom Baylor is absent. Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, thank you. Item 18 on our agenda, resolution 04-23-15, the resolution of the Council of the City of Cordova, Alaska, authorizing city manager to negotiate with Oracle America, Inc. for a three-year, $78,872.44 contract for NetSuite for Government Cloud-Based Accounting Software, and authorizing one-time implementation and transition costs not to exceed $107,000.
Mayor Allison?
Yes.
I move to approve resolution 04-2315. Second.
Moved and seconded to approve. Councilmember Sherman?
Um, yes, again, this is an item that we discussed at budget time with the manager, and it will approve the capabilities of our finance department to provide us with lots of things, so I'm all in favor of this.
Councilwoman Carpenter?
Yeah, ditto. I think this is a shift or an upgrade that's been talked about for a long time, and the city desperately needs financial to help with getting real-time financial management information.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shaffer?
Yeah, it'll help the city, and it'll help us as a council have a better understanding of where we're at financially, so I support this.
Councilmember Jones?
Uh, hold it.
Councilmember Kinsman?
Just after, I guess, what are the terms after three years? What are our options at that point?
Well, we pretty much, I would say, because of the cost of implementation, we are committing to a longer-term relationship with Oracle. They promised an acceleration amount not to exceed 3% for the next three-year contract term, so, um, to be determined, but not to exceed, so 3% is within a reasonable budget realm.
Thank you. Councilmember Meyer?
Yeah, I'm sorry, but I think it'd be a good upgrade that has been talked about, and really happy it's all the research and thought that the staff put into this, and not just taking something that they were necessarily part of it to, and something that I'm glad some talent has been looking after a little while now, so, you're happy.
Okay, any last? It sounded like everybody was supportive, so go ahead and do a roll on item 18.
Okay, on resolution 42315, Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
Ken Jones?
Yes.
Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Ann Shaffer?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, thank you. It takes us to unfinished business. Council decision regarding ballot prop for next election to change the method of council seat election to undesignated.
Mayor Allison?
Yes, Councilwoman Carpenter?
For the purpose of discussion, I move to direct staff to prepare a resolution for council's consideration that would approve ballot language to amend the charter, to change the way council members are elected to undesignated council seats.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so seconded. Okay, Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, so I think this is something that's been on the discussion, the pending agenda, for a long time, but it's also something that I'm interested in talking about, because when I first came here, this was how we were electing council members, was everybody was an at-large candidate, and we don't elect people by district. We don't have districts. They're just randomly assigning seats, and sometimes it's hard to field enough candidates to fill the seats we have, or to get a good collection of candidates. And so I don't really see the benefit of having designated seats when sometimes people end up running unopposed anyway, like I just did. So I would rather lower the barriers to recruiting candidates. I understand a little bit about at-large, I mean, about the benefits of having designated seats if you're running your elections by a municipal district. I did a little bit of reading. They talk about the benefits of being able to allow for, say, minority candidates or candidates who represent minority populations to get more, to get elected if you've got a minority population in that district who's going to vote. But we don't even do it that way, so I don't know that there's that benefit. So that's why I would like to see some conversation about moving back to at-large, and if it, I saw that in your, in the legal council's memo, which was written a year and a half ago, that there was mention of you might want to wait a year after we implement rank choice voting to see if that's something we also want to add, so we might hear about that too, so, thank you.
Councilwoman Shaffer?
Yeah, I, yeah, I guess I adopted strongly either way in thinking about barriers to, or if it would increase the number of people running for council. It could, but we also, you know, the hospital board and the school board are open, are open, undesigned seats, and we, again, you know, always have trouble getting people to fill those seats as well, just the seats that we have, so, um, I don't know if having someone to run against is motivating, or maybe it is demotivating, I don't know. So that's a good question. And I did think the questions about how to handle runoff elections, or if there would be any kind of runoff election, or what's too close to call, is something to consider if we were to move forward with this.
Councilmember Kinsman?
Um, just looking at it and looking at those, obviously it's been a conversation piece, and looking at the notes from Holly, I think it makes sense if we go with this model to remove the 40% threshold, and that it wouldn't be applicable to this, to this top style and type of, I guess, non-designated voting. I don't see, I guess when I look at it, I don't see it, it may be a complaint as, are more people going to be interested or not, but I don't see it as creating any additional opticals affecting things, you know? It will be any worse if we go with this route, or go this option, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Sherman?
Sure, um, I have not been in favor of this, but I've kind of gone six to one, half a dozen to the other. I just get tired of changing the rules every 10 years, but I have been reading about this in other places, and it does, for example, bigger communities like Anchorage, where you have districts and regions, I can see the absolute sense in this. I would just like to make sure it's, if we do this, that it's clear in case of a tie, or that, just that we are careful that when we do this. But whatever, my school board changed theirs five years or six years ago, and I mean, we'll probably, we'll probably be dead, but they can change it again, so.
Retired, just say retired.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes, hold it.
Councilmember Meyer?
I don't have a period, I was, uh, trying to change.
Hang on, Melina.
Hang on.
We're, we've got to at about 105 decibels and garbled, so that'd fix something.
I don't know if I can do it, though.
Can you try that one more time?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yeah, that's good. Perfect, thank you.
Okay, yeah, I hear what that was. I'm in support of it. It is a starter change, so it would have to be voted on anyways by the community, and I think it's a good option to have, I think, changing it every time is difficult, but I think if the school board and the hospital board are done this way, I think it would make our ballot maybe in some ways simpler, but right now, the council's a little different than those other ones, so, um, I think it is a change.
Thank you. Yeah, just, I'll throw some comments out on this one, because I spent a little time on council, but, um, as Councilmember Meyer said, this is something that's voted on by the public, and I just, I think the last time it was voted on, when it passed, it was, there was too many things thrown into the same, same proposition. There was changing from six to seven, there was to members of the council, there was a mayor thing in there.
November to March.
Just kind of convoluted there, so I think if we're just clear on that this is just changing to undesignated seats, make sure we have the ties and those kind of things worked out in there, and we're clear to the public on exactly what the proposition is all about, then I think it's worth letting the public decide how they want to vote for their representatives, so, anyway. Round two? Anybody? Councilwoman Carpenter?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. I'm not suggesting that this would, that the dynamics of this would automatically encourage more people to run, I just thought it would be more straightforward for the people who are running, or even just more straightforward to get candidates. You know, we wouldn't have to feel like we had two candidates for each seat, so.
Yeah, I guess I'd go back to every other group in town that has an election is all at-large, because we don't have districts. And the only time it should ever change, I think, is if we get big enough to where we have districts, you know, and I could run for the Whiskey Ridge subdivision, then that'd be one thing, but, you know, everything else, the school board, the hospital board, CDC board, CTC board, they're all at-large, and the people know how to vote that way, so I don't think it'll be a big thing for them, but let the public decide, so. Any last comments on 19? We're directing the staff to bring that proposition forward to the council for formal approval. Yeah, Councilwoman Carpenter?
I am curious to hear if Holly has any thoughts on the whole, I mean, does it, the rank choice idea of when you're voting for at-large candidates, does that, I don't know if you've seen that implemented in other places? Does it add anything? Does it make it way too complicated?
I don't see any reason to add the rank choice voting in a level election. That doesn't mean, I mean, I think that it can be done, and I think a small election makes it very manageable, but at the same time, I just, I don't think when I play, when I walk through the scenarios, I think that it's just as effective to, mind you, remove the 40%.
I was going to say, you know, if they helped with the 40%, they, if we get rid of that, then it doesn't matter.
And to, and, exactly, and to adopt clear guidelines that are in your code, not guidelines, directives regarding the counting of the ballots and the determination of the pre-dailing candidate, and so is, and that really was, I mean, it was a long time ago, I know, but that memo was designed really just sort of as a cautionary tale to make sure we do it comprehensively, and we change all the provisions we need to change, and that we communicate with the voter on a single issue, which is this issue of if that doesn't make the seats and do it in a way that they really feel confident when they vote a voter on the ballot box.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody last comments? Call for a roll, please.
Sure. On the motion to direct staff to bring a resolution forward to put this on the next election as a ballot prop, Ken Jones?
Yes.
Ann Shaffer?
Yes.
Kristen Carpenter?
Yes.
Casey Kinsman?
Yes.
Melina Meyer?
Yes.
And Kathy Sherman?
Yes.
Motion carries six, zero.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to doing nice and ladies biz, pending agenda?
Thank you for doing that last item in May, 10 months before the next election, so Holly will have plenty of time to get us that language, and if any of you are considering any other charter changes for a ballot proposition, better to do it earlier than last minute, like in January, so you can always consider that. The only thing I wrote down for pending agenda was the next facility condition assessment work session. We have the, May 17th work session is housing, oh, at noon, actually, so we could do the facility condition assessment one either May 5th, we could also do it May, what's the other one, 17th at 6:00 PM. We're having the- We're having the housing one at noon. Helen, you said you are ready for the next?
Yeah, we're ready for the next.
Anybody comments on that? Um, the rest of the facility condition assessments, um, do we want to do it right away, May fifth at six? Do we want to wait till June?
I said, May third.
May third is what C A D S.
Oh, what's that?
Yeah, well, I thought we were, do we have school board joint meeting on the third of May, that's.
Oh, did I write that?
Yeah, it's.
Am I saying fifth, but it's the third?
Yes, five, three, maybe that's where the five comes in.
Oh, okay. I don't know, I write that on the calendar every year, and then I forget, and I haven't talked to anyone, but yeah, do you want to do that, before our meeting? Why do I not find it in the agenda?
School board should be just about ready by that time for presenting their official budget to us, I would think.
Okay, so I'll get with them to do that, May third, six P.M., joint with the school board.
Um, just regarding the housing conversation, Kristen, did you have anything to add regarding the housing assessment? We had talked at our last meeting.
I was going to ask, so we are going to contract, yeah, with Community Research Group, and I was going to ask them to participate in the, on the seventeenth.
I was just, you had mentioned that you were going to bring it up at the meeting, so I just did.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I was fixated on something else, but thank you, yeah, thanks.
I think the legislature is also considering some tax incentives to allow for, for housing, and I kind of think that that's, that's still in the legislature.
I saw that, too.
It's not official yet, but there is, housing is a concern all over the state, not just, not just, probably all over, but.
Okay, so I'll, I'll put facility condition assessments on the pending agenda, if it's not already there, to say June, or whatever.
Well, and if school board doesn't let me with us on the third, there's no reason why they couldn't.
Okay, okay, so we'll.
I think their budget has, has.
We have to be passed, so I think they don't, we don't have a choice.
When do they, they have to get it to us by? Oh, June first?
Yeah.
And we have to approve it within thirty days, or something.
Because everybody goes in effect July first.
Right. Okay, we'll, we'll work with the school board staff.
Anybody else need anything on the agenda, or want to consider anything?
I was just going to ask, for Susan's sake, trying to chip away at this stuff on the, that we have.
Chip away!
Long laundry list. So B three is on there from twenty eighteen, Resolution twelve eighteen thirty-six about the E nine one one system, is that?
I mean, I guess it's not a bad idea to keep it on there, because we do keep saying that if we ever get E nine one one, then we will put it in.
If you want to reenact the tax.
Right, we're not going to do it until we purchase something, or at least have a plan to purchase something. Was it in this year's budget? No.
No.
The state is also doing something statewide, too. See, that's whole technology has changed so much from five years ago.
And then what about number one, is that still, well, number one under A, city manager?
Yeah, I mean, that was a long time ago. Well, although Holly and I, and Helen and staff often have conversations about procurement, and purchasing, and whether or not we need to tackle that whole, just word it better more.
In terms of a pre-cremacy policy and.
Yeah, just so that staff knows exactly how to bring an item forward for council approval, when, it doesn't have to be for council approval, I think we have a flow chart of some kind.
And in addition, triggering a council remove of the, of the floor of procurement, so that you don't get too far behind inflation, and is what happens in a lot of communities that I represent, is very quickly, they have like a five hundred dollar procurement, you know, it must go for, you know, and it just, it gets completely outpaced by the reality of the economy, so having that built in just prevents the administration in the future from having to come to council and saying, this is not, this is not worth what it was.
Right.
Maybe I'll reword it. Should I reword it?
Pardon?
Should I reword it?
Well, do we still need this, if you guys have a policy in place?
Oh, well, it's in code, and we were talking about whether or not we were going to maybe change code, and really just understand it better, but maybe that's more of a staff thing than you guys.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, is this ever going to come, I mean, is, is it going to be something that gets onto our agenda?
It would if it's an ordinance, and it's changed in code, so, whatever, should I take it off?
But from what you were saying, Holly, you're saying council should be reviewing this.
I think it's very valuable to have a trigger, so that it depersonalizes and takes it away from, it becomes a, you know, we know that every ten years, there will be a change between the value of five thousand dollars, right? And so if council has an ordinance that triggers that review of the, of the approval, then that just happens naturally, and you can find your numbers to be more accurate and reflective of reality, in my opinion. But it's, you know, it's, it's really a policy decision, but it might be worth putting an ordinance on, so you can consider that policy decision, I think, as a. Excuse me if I'm wrong, but isn't it already in place?
At twenty-five thousand, yeah.
Yeah, so you have, and so we wouldn't necessarily, so what I'm saying is not that you would revisit your amount necessarily, but that you would adopt an ordinance that says something like, you know, every.
Five years.
Yeah, every five years, council shall review the, you know.
The twenty-five thousand dollars, so that you can adjust it for.
To keep up with inflation.
Correct.
Without having to grant, it's a, you know, instead of council having to.
Before emergency.
Yes, and before you have, you're getting requests for it, because then I think that becomes harder to, it's harder for council to suss out the objective need or lack of need, right, when it's just coming when it's. Unlike the triggers in Anchorage, where you go ahead and just spend the money without asking council, or something like, oh, no.
Yes, that's a point.
Well, I was, I was, you know, for me, a trigger is a good thing, but if it's not broke, I don't see why we have to fix it.
Well, so if we're not going to change it, then it should just come off the list, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
If it's already, if, if we have what we need, then it doesn't need to be on a pending, but it's not going to be a future agenda, anyway.
I think that was one, there was a little bit of conflict between staff and manager, and we didn't have a finance director, and nobody knew how to do what.
And that was a previous manager.
Right, right.
So, what conflict?
Not you.
Well, it was initially raised to twenty-five thousand, from five thousand, because of the Cordova Center, you know, and every, everything we did for the Cordova Center cost twenty-five thousand, so we raised it for that, and then we just never went, went back, so I think there was some concern on council that, that we're done with the Cordova Center, and now it may not be necessary, but I, I like Holly's idea of putting it in code, that it has to be reviewed every so often, because then, then your manager isn't thinking that somebody's out to, to get him, or you just hire a new manager, and then the first thing, thing, you know, you get to talk about is, is there authority to spend, and, you know, where does, where does the trust go there, so.
Exactly.
I think it was just in there, that if you look at it every five years, or ten years, or however often you need to do it, certainly even if it's in code, that you look at it every five years, doesn't mean you can't change it next year, because we've got a forty million dollar harbor project, and everything we do for that costs.
Fifty thousand dollars, at least.
More than the Cordova Center.
Anyway, I think it's worth leaving there for discussion.
Does it need to be reworded?
Yes, I will reword it.
Perfect.
I think I'll capture what you guys are saying.
Okay, anything else for the pending agenda? Do you want anything on the agenda? We've only got till, we have five Wednesday's this month, or?
No, it's just the other two.
I don't think so, so, so by next Wednesday, the agenda will come out. Happens fast, so, okay. We'll move along to audience participation, then. Anything you want to comment on, doesn't have to be on the agenda, any comments? I fear we've dwindled our crowd quite a bit.
But not at all.
We did, we did, that was good.
Even on Sunday, don't.
So, moving on to council comments, I'm going to go through my list here, Councilmember Carpenter.
I appreciated hearing from Representative Stutes, and getting the update, and, I guess I'd just say thanks to the planning staff for all the work on C A D P applications, because I know that's a big, that's a big chunk of work, and thanks for all the staff reports.
Councilmember Kinsman.
Yeah, thank you, staff, for the quarterly reports, that was, it's good, it's good to see what's going on in our community, and the good stuff we're doing, so, thank you for that, I know that takes a little bit of time to put those together as well, so, but it does help in highlighting what you guys are doing. Other than that, yes, it was great to hear from, from council member students, or.
Representatives.
Representative students, thank you.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Yeah, I thought the comments about, like, thanking the staff for their hard work on the grants, and for the quarterly reports, I also appreciated having the audience and public comment, it was really nice, um, and, yeah, appreciated Representative Stutes and her information. Uh, another plug for the Cordova cleanup on Saturday, it's looking ragged out there now that the snow's melting, so, kind of clean out.
Councilmember Meyer.
I'm in for a second, council meeting.
Councilmember Sherman.
Um, I can't fill everything except for me, I just, I made notes for homework, but the assessments for all the facilities is online, it's really easy to access, and it's really easy to read, and I'm not going to print them either, but they're, I'm just taking notes, and it's really incredibly interesting and informative, so I think everybody should be reading them. I meant, comment on the comp plan made me think I should go back and read that, too, because that could give us a lot of insight into what the community wants, and that's not too out of date, I don't think, for us to use. Um, it was really nice to have a student council report, especially from Mikey Gasmann, because I remember him when he was little, um, and I wanted to thank the clerk and the attorney for a really organized Board of Equalization meeting, I learned a lot of information, and went home and bored my husband to death, just explaining the process and pulling out our tax assessments and looking at them, so, anyway, it was more math than I've done in a long time, but I learned a lot.
Councilmember Jones.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm totally.
Okay, thanks everybody for participating tonight, uh, just one extra comment for the, for the staff and the staff reports, we don't often have questions or discuss those much at the table, but I'm pretty sure that all of the council members read those, and, and are interested in those, and, and we do appreciate those reports that you do, so, so, thank you, everybody, we don't have an executive session tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any objection to adjournment?